Based on a seat in a course. So that would be seventy-five, a seat would be a student.
Okay. And then it doesn't have the la- I know we're not using it for any of those ones that have labs because it's a lab series.
I've not used any of them.
And then it says there's an automatic renewal and so I'm just.
You're looking at the contract.
Yeah.
That's actually, that's being taken out of the contract. In fact, they've already agreed. Yeah, we sent the contract out, I think at the end of last week with recommendations. That was one of the things that, you know, the attorney docs recommended be taken out. They've already, they sent it back earlier today and initially all of our recommended changes, that was mine.
It seems to me the cost comparison is a difficult one only because in terms of our own summer school, we're running it in Rixton Water Building, we have a specific number of days, a specific number of hours in each given day. Whereas here, if it's an online course, how is that judgment made in terms of cost per hour, say, as opposed to cost per student?
Yeah, we would also, we would need someone to coordinate it, to register students and that would be significant. But also to monitor student progress, to make sure that they're working towards, you know, successful completion of the experience. So, but I can put some things together sort of later compared to.
I thought high school wasn't so much everybody coming in, I thought it was more.
I think they come in more often than they were when it was initially like that now, or five years ago. The students who do the course recovery typically end twice a week to get help and.
It's not as much as the elementary school.
No, certainly, no, definitely not.
Okay, any other questions on that? All right, that finishes the contracts. Items two and three are settlement agreements. So if you read them, if you have any questions or concerns about them, you have to contact Dr. Phillips. You can't discuss them here. Item four is to, first, a couple bids results for musical instruments and supplies. Do you want to say anything about those Kathy or?
Just, um, our, just, you know, follow up the last bids that we put out that we had to get some more, I still.
Do you have any idea how many instruments we're talking about? Because I know it obviously depends on the types of instruments we purchase them.
No, I was gonna say not, not.
So it's listed in here except that we've gotten that.
We just have one of these.
Yeah, but this computer.
Yeah, you have to zoom in. So it's like.
It's one, that's.
Phillips, what happened?
These, yes, and these, these are, there's nine, but some of these are large instruments. We're talking about tympanis, uh, set- tympanis sets of things that are, are large dollar items.
Looks like the second bid is a bunch of smaller, a lot of smaller stuff. There's mallets.
More supply cases than instruments.
Are these part of the instrument replacement?
So it's part, some of it's part of, it's part of its instrument replacement and part of it is adding building budgets. So like the, um, the mallets and things coming out of building budgets, but the tympanis, the tubas are coming out of the replacement budget.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, item five is, um, through the technology requests and then, and the only one here is for chronos. I assume it's their maintenance agreement for the chronos. And we've had chronos for quite a while already. Okay. All right, item six is for the student activity account request. So we have three requests to close, all for the high school, the spring musical, the drama club, and the indoor guard. So. What, how much? So we're transferring, I guess these were the proper places for the chronos. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I just noticed on the indoor guard, one that has an incorrect date on it. It says it was signed on September twenty. I think that was fourteen.
I think that's a six.
I think it's a six, looks like a nine.
Six twenty fourteen. Yeah, correct. And it turns right on the line.
At the bottom.
I was looking at the top.
No, the bottom.
It should be.
I just think it's, it should be compared to.
Okay. Oh yeah, it's not September yet.
Yeah. Uh, and then renewal requests, two for brass, for the green brass grabbers and brass health and student council, and two for south, middle student council and south middle.
Do the councils have to be renewed every year?
Yes.
Did you have those in mind?
Okay, item seven is a contract, oh, not a contract, sorry, purchase order. So I assume we had approved this already.
To viewpoint.
Right, this, this is your, this is the annual maintenance that against the, the Jones, well, I can do the purchase order for. And viewpoint is the management system that Matt uses, Mr. Smith uses for various data components that he uses.
All right, and then we have a Bucks County intermediate taper bid results.
Right, and we would just be asking you to accept the.
Bucks County intermediate.
Yeah, we always ask, or to accept.
But we have the option of either using of that or going independently, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Uh, okay, number nine, review federal program awards.
Again, these are the dollars that we will be getting in now.
When you put on, she, there's a resolution, so we'll have electronic signatures.
It's like something you're inside.
Right, we, this is, this, yes, this is a resolution on that, we're going to say that we're going to accept the federal dollars.
It says it's with the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
And I will, I, I wouldn't say anything, this, this, this was just provided to me, so I'll go back to the person that provided to me. That would be Dr. Marcus, I was.
Yeah, and I don't say anything about accepting federal dollars, it's all about using the electronic signature. Business with P E P.
So are we gonna bring that, something that requires for a Monday thing, or that's just?
Yes, we'll look, again, doctor, doctor.
Requires clarification.
Right.
Did you know that you do your, your federal grants through E grants through the Department of Ed? Now, I can't tell from reading this for sure that that's what this is.
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what it's, well, we're going to clarify.
All right, um. Then the last item was informational that I think everybody received about a repository sale, I see.
That's, that's correct, the repository sale, and what I'd like to discuss with this, um, repository sales come as they come. And what happened with the last one, it came immediately following the board meeting, but was due back prior to the next board meeting. So I was, I'd like to discuss with the board if they would be willing to set some parameter that I put on their behalf, say yes or no to it, and then have it ratified at the next board meeting, such as we do with some other items. Um, yeah, the last sale was ten percent sale, ten percent of assessed value. Does, you know, would the board be willing to accept forty percent of assessed value of a property and have a sole repository sale? So that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for, to have some sort of guidelines, because if we do nothing, it's, it's a, an acceptance. And we may not want to accept the ten percent in our repository sale.
Do we need to know more about all these parcels? Like, here's one with no fringe, it's, but it keeps coming back, keep coming back.
Right, so this is, this is the.
So I was trying to get this, this acreage for some reason, it says no fringing.
Right, so this is, the one that came recently was a land, is a land only, is assessed ten thousand three hundred, I believe. And I think the last, um, offer was.
Fifteen hundred acres, two point three acres.
Oh, I'll have to buy it.
But you can't get to it. You have to drop.
You have to jump. I get a helicopter, I get dropped.
I'll already have to jump.
So, no, I'm serious about it, do we need to, does that matter? Like, what are, what's our tactic, what does that little we do?
Well, well, we don't lose, okay.
Why don't we prevent someone from buying?
Well, it says we can't, why would we?
We can't, because we don't want to be active, we can't, we don't have to accept.
Right. Right, we don't have to accept it.
But we can't, we can't unreasonably prevent that.
Right, but do you, do you believe that a, that a fifteen hundred dollar offer is.
Is what?
Is sufficient for a property that's valued at ten thousand?
Well, it's like a boat in the desert, we need to.
You can say it's worth anything.
Well, that depends, I mean, if this is an individual who has contiguous property, it might be very valuable. I don't know the individual or where the property is, because it's not listed here, but its real value depends on what it is and where it is and who it is.
All I'm trying to say is, we shouldn't make, stop people from, I don't know, why, why do we, what's the, why do we want, do we, I'm not saying we want to prevent somebody, but this is the third time you've seen this, right? Same time.
But now it's already gone through, you're saying it's too late for this one?
Not yet. Oh, it is too late. Oh, so excuse me, it's over now.
So your question is for the future, right?
Right, for the future.
Just the board wants.
Right, I was bringing this as an example, so for the future, because, excuse me, it could happen next week. I didn't get one next week. And not know what to do with it.
Let me.
And if the board disapproves it, automatically, or disapprove it on the board's authority, then what happens?
Then it sits in repository sale for the next offer.
So that just simply slows the process down, is what it was.
Are these foreclosed properties?
No, uh, they're.
For tax sales.
This is not, right, this is not a foreclosure, foreclosures are when banks to, banks are taking this elsewhere.
So this is just based, oh, selling it for the cost of the tax.
Right.
Do we get those taxes in itself?
Yes, if there's something to be, you know, distributed.
Okay, so that's why we want to increase the percentage of them.
Well, the other thing is, once it sells, that owner then will start paying the taxes on that.
Do they pay it on the assessed value or?
Sure.
Yes.
So.
So, yeah, you may, you may want to, again, moving, moving forward, I think we need, again, we, we seem to have more and more of these, I mean, I think this is the third time, third one I've seen in the last year.
So we may not get the taxes that have not been, we may not get the amount of the taxes that are unpaid, but then if it goes to the next buyer, then we'll get those taxes.
Then we'll start getting taxes.
Oh, hopefully you have so, such a bad deal, is it?
But you're saying that it would be on the appraise value, like in that case, the ten thousand two hundred, but they buy the property for fifteen hundred, that doesn't change the appraise value?
Unless they give for an assessment deal with it.
Reassessment.
So what's your question again?
Is, is there some, is there some percentage of, what do you suggest?
Assessed value.
Well, that, I said, that's what they offered us, that's what they recently, again, that would be up, up to the board meeting, is ten percent, like, one percent or ten percent? Which are you going to go to? I don't, I, I don't really have one, again, I suspect some of these properties, ten percent on a ten thousand dollar property, and that stuff. I, I, I need a, I, I do need a, I need authorization, I need, I need a guide, I need a guideline, is there a guideline that says for this term of period, we're going to say
She's always so bright tonight.
Twenty percent of, you know, and then it's at least twenty percent, it's at least twenty percent we're going to allow to get there.
Can we ask Central Bucks, I know they've been very interested about their assessment policy, what their, yes, whether they have a policy or have an authorization, something like that, and maybe others, but I know they've been, been quoting those.
Or she has. Picture of you with a mask.
It's not pretty.
Yeah, that's a good testimony.
Yeah, I would, and maybe we, then we could discuss it in the morning. We have a little more time to think about it, I wasn't realizing that's what you wanted tonight, and he goes.
Who's that girl with a mask?
Is that right?
That's the one.
Sounds like Sipper.
All right, um, I believe that brings us to the agenda, although, um, Mr. Johnson was going to give us a quick update, as you know, Governor Corbett signed the budget while we were away. And Kathy's going to give us an update, what it means for us, real quick.
Yes, the governor did sign the budget and use his line, line veto power to, um, some, some funding out of the budget for legislators. For the, for Penrich School District, we did end up getting an additional two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and five dollars that we had not anticipated in the budget. Basically, that's forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars in special education and two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for the ready-to-learn grant. That particular grant does have some funding tied to it, some uses that we can only use it for specific things. I know, um, Mr. Smith and the cabinet will be looking at how they're going to, to use that, will have to put together a budget. As you know, Mr. Smith said that the E grants, we'll have to file that online. So at some point, when that's determined how it's going to be, we'll come back to the board to let you know what, what the final organization is about, those funds. Basically, I was, basic education is about seven thousand dollars less than what I had included in the budget. Overall, we did better than, better than anticipated, but again, two hundred and fifty-five thousand of that is, it has strings attached to it, so it's not guaranteed ongoing funding.
Um, and you probably know too that what didn't get passed was any kind of pension reform. And I don't know, for the people in the audience, earlier this week, once again, Pennsylvania bonds were downgraded again. This is like the third straight time, or the second straight time. So for all you who are very upset as we have to increase taxes, I think you need to talk to your representatives because something needs to be done. There's just, there, there's nothing being done about the critical issues of pension costs and, and basic education costs and charter schools, all those things. Nothing's being done at the state level, so, and, you know, we're forced to raise taxes more than we want because we have to cover those costs. We can't, you know, we can't say, no, we, we pass them on, we, we have to pay for them, so, I don't know if anybody else wants to make any comments.
Mrs. Johnson, any of the projected money from the state, is that money that could potentially be withdrawn as the state goes through their fiscal year? Because clearly there are those, you know, the doom and gloom type types like Diane, who believe that they won't make their revenue projections and their budget will be out of balance, and so come January or February especially, we may or may not have a new governor, but that is my question, and I realize I'm putting you on the spot, but what's your thinking, is, is this reasonably secure or not secure at all?
My thinking is they could always withhold ones and not send them to us on a timely basis. Um, that, that would be one, one thing that could possibly happen. Um, by law, they're required to fund our fifty percent of pension and fifty percent of social security. So, um, I'm not quite sure if they would withhold those grant funding, I, I would have to, I have not read the whole grant. Like, I can see that we would be, could, be postponed, because they've already started that.
The plant con is a classic example.
Plant con is a classic.
We're not suffering from that currently, but there are districts which are, they're not getting paid their reimbursement, they presumed when they, they started the project.
So I, I can see more than, than time, um, in getting, in getting funding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, and I believe that's it for finance, I don't know, should we allow public comment? Does anybody have any comment about any of this?
Two questions.
Sure.
Kyle from the intel.
Can you turn on the light?
Hit the button.
Yep.
Yep. Two questions, it may have been discussed, is the document, estimate document tonight going to be made available to the public now or in the future?
Which one?
Which document?
The document with all the estimates on it for the concession stand.
It's going to be on the website.
Okay, just for my purposes tonight, I think it may have been mentioned, but the, the minimum cost for the concession stand with just the restaurants, would somebody be kind enough to provide the, those two estimates, or the?
Well, we don't know till we get the lowest bid. So that.
Are you asking for the estimate?
We always use the, we get ourselves painted into it, we say estimates, budget, hopeful, hopeful number.
But you're basing decisions off the estimates provided tonight, or you will?
We're basing, we're not making any decisions tonight.
Not tonight, but?
So the numbers that we get from our engineer are their best guess based on square footage, construction materials. So that's what we, where we start, but our budget, our cost is the lowest bid.
I'm asking what the best guesses of our, are tonight, would anybody want to provide that?
Well, it was on there, what did he say, it was one point two million for the base?
It's like her two, one point two, and that does not include fees because those would be adjusted accordingly.
Right, because their fees are the whole project.
Thank you very much.
It also, it doesn't have, it doesn't have the concession stand separated either, so.
Well, but if you take the total cost and you chunked out the other thing, but the lack is basically a concession thing.
I'll, I'll show you later, you'll see a one point two, but in that one point two are as much as six or seven hundred thousand dollars that can come out based on decision, so. And that's just a guideline, a guide, basically what you're figuring for the addition. What you're going to put in that base, you know, when you see the diagram, you'll see it, probably you'll have it tomorrow, you'll understand, I'll show you if you want to stick around.
Yeah, you know, um, just go quickly, the fees, like Dewey's fees, is based on the actual cost of the prod- of the project, the actual cost.
Construction.
Construction, so if we come under, like the bids come on, do we pay him first? Based on that, we pay him after, after the construction, so there's no payback.
It's a percentage rate of the, of the actual cost.
The ones that's done, of the actual cost. Actual cost, okay, I was just curious about that. I, I just know sometimes we get money back, or sometimes we see money.
It's done that way with architects and engineers typically. The percentage fee of the cost.
On the actual.
So I have a question, I know you didn't hear it from me, but. So you, you talked about your budget and all these mandates, and now, you know, how you can, what, what are you going to do about that? That you have to live with, but this, the football stuff, I, I just have a hard time with that because it's, does, what has that got to do with education? The money you're putting out on this football field and for this entertainment, what has that, and two point eight million total? What has that got to do with education, that's entertainment for these, for, for kids? Entertainment, so again, I, I'm, I'm kind of confused in, you're saying you can do, you know, you're getting mandates, but yet you're spending two, up to two point eight million for a concession, a building, for entertainment, for kid, for kids and for families.
I wouldn't call it entertainment, I mean, the whole, I consider sports as an extracurricular activity, and it's not just football that uses that field. Please be aware of that, it's not just football.
I, I understand, I, I totally understand, but.
I had kids who played soccer, who played basketball, I personally feel that's a very important part of education, it's not entertainment.
I, I understand.
It's part of learning, it's part of growth, it's just as much as being in the classroom.
I, I, I understand, I, I totally understand, I truly, truly understand that. But not all those kids are going to be playing football outside of twelfth grade.
It's not just football, I'm sorry, there's other, soccer uses that field, field hockey uses that field, boys, girls, everybody uses that field.
I, I understand that, you have that right now.
Okay.
You have that right now, what you have right now, you, you, you can live with, yes, except for the door.
No, the stands are falling down, we couldn't live with it, that's what started this whole process.
Okay. Okay. But again, it comes back to the cost factor, what was then and what's today? Today you have a new world with all these mandates and the pension problems for, for a select piece, a select few who are teachers. It doesn't benefit hundred percent of your community. So, I mean, I, I, I'm just putting that out there for you to keep in mind, I'm just putting it out there, you know, I know, I can't do anything about this, but
Oh, I think you can.
I hope you understand my complaint as well, you know.
And what, what you need to do is, is I leave some of the members here, I believe Mr. Thompson.
But you control your budget, you control your budget.
If you don't mind, please don't interrupt.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
My comment to you was that there is something that we can do, but it takes a lot of people to get, the pension system can only be reformed, changed by the legislature, basically. One could say the courts could do that, but they typically don't, it will be the legislature, they're the ones who changed it in the early two thousands and, and created some of the issues that exist today. But until those are changed in another way, we are mandated to pay that. And if we don't pay it, which is not a good plan, it gets taken out of the subsidy that comes here, which are your tax dollars, not your local tax dollars, but your state tax dollars, coming back to the district. So either way, basically, the district and its taxpaying base lose. So my, my request of you would be, just as you're requesting us to look at our budget, would be to contact those state legislators, legislators, because there are numerous proposals that have been floated on the floor of the General Assembly, none of which have gotten enough support to pass. Obviously, Governor Corbett is distressed by this, some would say, and I would be one of them, who would say that he hasn't led, but he wants someone else to propose a change that will, will help. And frankly, a lot of those proposals are proposals that will solve only future problems, not the current problem, that's the scariest part.
Yes.
Because you can change that system today for new employees, but you have many years of past liability, forty-seven billion dollars, I believe is the most recent estimate, that we are going to have to pay for collectively. I don't know what to tell you, but that is something that we live with, and that's a big part, part of the budget problem this year. Three point six million dollars was new money to pay pension obligations.
I, 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 I might understand that, you know, it just. It's intentional, we get one more comment at the end, and they have policies that say we don't give one time, three minutes, and not have discussion, and we have another meeting.
I just had a quick question related to Helen Field, because it was talked about, wouldn't be doing the whole project, doing the whole project right? I mean, I know a lot of times it comes in.
Send her up, please send her up to the podium.
Oh, sure, what's wrong?
Well, you didn't say that to anybody else.
No, of course not.
Just Diane?
Um, my question is really related to the turf field itself, I don't know how old it is and what the lifespan is, and I know sometimes it's a lower cost to replace something when you're already doing construction versus you did all this work and then have to go back, so. So do we know that answer in terms of how old the turf is, what the life expectancy is, and when it might have to be replaced now that we're going to put all of this activity on it?
Yes, look, it's just inspected, it's wearing great, we're going to get more, they couldn't, they were shocked at how great it was, shape. So it's in good shape, and when it does have to get replaced, it's going to be just, it's going to be not as expensive as it was to go down.
Two more years.
Okay.
Year after next.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the next personnel, that would be Mr. Demme.
I'm glad we're finally here. We have a very short number of items, I'm not going to go through in detail because everybody's got, got the packages, and after this meeting, we will have an executive session. First item on the, on the agenda is the renewal contract for the district school position. That's going to come up in a proposal on Monday. The next one is for dental physician contracts, for dentists, for two dentists, and that will come up on Monday. The third is a football medical physician contract, and then the fourth is a... is to cover a staff consultant for food services. And the last one is using the source for teachers and the contract for the... So that, those will all be coming up on Monday. We've all had a chance to look at them, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just, you know, having all the committees here together, one thing I did notice is that on finance, when we have all these contracts that are reviewed by our solicitor, are these also reviewed by our solicitor?
These are pretty small, they're, they're standard things that have been at one time, I think they'll, but these are just repeats, the same contracts. They're essentially the same contract for another...
There's just, there's no changes, probably, there's one person that hasn't formally, pendulally has said fine, but hasn't formally contacted us. So I expect to hear from her tomorrow. These contracts have been in effect for...
The contract wording itself?
Yeah, have been effective, these, I... Yeah, but things change, I mean, I, I think it's our general practice to have all our other contracts reviewed by solicitor, especially since we have a new solicitor.
Bill, let's, let's check with, you should run the grade and make sure.
Sure.
Okay?
Hey, I also had a question about the source for teachers' contract. It says it's an addendum, but I don't think I was on the board when it was actually approved, so I would like a copy of the original contract.
And the next meeting is going to be scheduled at a TBD, okay?
Okay, and a while, your standing policy, do you have?
There is nothing, except the report, and our next, I cannot tell you yet, sometime, I think in September.
Technology, Mr. Thompson?
Nothing scheduled today that I know of.
Okay, and that is all the news that has been here, so we are to public comment. Anyone have further public comment? It's the bill board.
Carrie Lomore, Hilltown. At the last full board, full board meeting in June, you were discussing about a band trailer purchase that got tabled and it was supposed to be discussed tonight, yet there was no mention of it. So I'm just wondering what's going on.
Is that a question?
My question was, and it's still my question, is I believe that the band organization should be contributing towards the cost of the truck and trailer that will be required in this purchase. And I have not heard yet what the finances are from the musical organization. I would still like to see that before I'm willing to go forward with a positive request.
Do other groups pay for physical maintenance of the school district towns?
I don't know that I can answer that question. Certainly the band, I will tell you this, 10 years ago or more, when the band uniforms were purchased previous time, there was a request by Dr. Kish with agreement from the board that the band will contribute to that cost. I believe the board, in its entirety, the uniforms.
I'm talking about other organizations besides the band. Has it been purchased of something for the football team? The football booster club has had to pay into a solid piece of property, not a uniform, a solid piece of property.
I don't know the answer to that question, Mrs. Lomore.
I can maybe answer that. I know the booster club does provide not uniforms, that type of thing, but equipment that they use that is the property of the school district then, because it stays on property here.
Something like truck or a trailer?
Ah, well, sleds, does that make any difference, does that make sense to you?
How much is a sled?
They are their equipment that they use for practicing for the team. So it is, and that is, there are things that, yes, the booster club does purchase.
Are they forced to purchase it?
Then the property of the school.
Okay, so for like the new football stadium, is the football booster club going to have to give X number of dollars towards the stadium because it's for mainly their use?
It's not mainly their use.
And well, then, booster clubs, are they, like soccer booster clubs and anybody, other booster clubs that use those fields, are they going to be asked to contribute some money towards the cost of it? The band's DNS can contribute cost towards the trail.
I think the band will get to use that field as well, and I think they, I personally think they should be glad for it. I've heard comments, comments about the muddy conditions at Poppy Yogurt with new band uniforms, especially if they're white in any, in any sense. So the band will be one of the beneficiaries, along with the sports teams that play there, and our physical education people in terms of that particular field. So it's a multi-purpose field, clearly, and will be more so unless the stadium is there.
Okay, but that didn't answer my question.
Well, Mrs. Dartley and Mr. Smith are forming this ad hoc committee to raise funds, or to attempt to raise funds, to contribute, yes, things to that stadium. This, I don't see this as different, I think the times have changed. In the past, there was a time when the district bought all the equipment for the food service. That's no longer true. The cafeterias and the monies that they raise now purchase things like freezers and refrigerators, especially when they're replacements. So, you know, times do change, and they're, they're tougher times now, clearly.
Okay, well, I hope a lawsuit doesn't happen, a kid falling off that lift gate.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lind, please.
I thought of something. Last year, Mr. Torotto, I think when he was, came on last year for technology, there was a lot of talk about thin clients, and we bought a lot of thin client equipment, if you recall, I think you probably... But now I look on public surplus and I see that you're selling the thin client equipment. In fact, there's a number of brand new thin clients, it says even in the box. So now you're disposing of them, and we just bought them last year, so I guess I feel like we're wasting money.
No, we are not selling the ones that we bought last year, those are ones that were here from a prior, from a prior predecessor. We just found some more over in our, as we were cleaning out the district support center.
You mean like the Apple browser?
There was a lot of stuff that was over in the district support center, and another mix and crannies, as we cleaned it out.
Well, I guess that explains it. Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Rush?
This might be the wrong sport to reference, but, this might be the wrong sport to reference, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of joy in Mudville at some of these meetings. So I guess what I wanted to say tonight first was to thank you very much, as a board, to approve the additional counselor for the middle schoolers next year. I think that was a really wise decision, you know, good, good investment of money. I think we live in a culture that people get pretty ripped up, and I'm not judging it, but I think it's true that, you know, when we look at dollars, about bricks and mortar and fields and buildings and books and academic tools and, all those things take money. And I'm not for, I don't have any clue about the complexities of all these decisions, about all the laws and about all the things that have to take place to get things built to code and whatnot. But I do know this, that to get up at 10 o'clock at night on July 9th, to know that I'm between you and another meeting, it does make it hard for really good discourse and dialogue and to really understand each other's points of view and all the different things they're doing in decisions. So one of the problems that I think, not just Penridge, but I think most school boards have and most government organizations have, is the structure of meetings with citizens. And they get contentious and, you know, you know, some people come out for the first time and apologize for not knowing some things and want to know things, and board members want to respond to them. So a couple comments, one, I hope that we do continue our retreats, because I think it's a really good idea to have some time that people can sit and talk with each other differently without microphones and times and, so whatever that could happen. I know Mr. Thompson started one two years ago, and I hope that we do those on a regular basis, that people can sit in committees and get more information, so that maybe they'll be more informed public when these tough decisions get made. And I don't envy any one of you about the years ahead, because I think you're right, Dr. Gilmour, there are going to be really difficult decisions to be made. So, and my hope always is, as you know, I'm an advocate for young people in their developmental years, and I always encourage our deliberations around social and emotional health and relationships that kids can gain here at Penridge, that we give as much scrutiny and attention to those decisions that we do to all these other things that cost so much. So with that, I want to thank you again for that additional counselor, for all those kids who will benefit, we'll never know who they are, we'll never know whose lives are changed by single conversations. I think it will be tough to have a third of a counselor in each building, but it was a step forward. And whoever put this on your website, our website, I appreciate that going up for parents. It's a drug and alcohol information sheet, I'm not sure who would be responsible for that, but thank you very much for doing that. And hopefully, we can continue with those retreats going forward. So thank you very much for your work and your dedication to take care of our community, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, this meeting is adjourned and we are headed to a technical session. So if you would please clear the room as quickly as possible. Yes, five minutes.